Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting tonight, our public session agenda. It is February 11th, 2021, and the time is 6:12 PM. We'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight's meeting with noting our employee of the month. And the employee of the month this month is Dennis Chuppi. Dennis is a member of our fire department. He is the Village Fire Department Administrator, and he has been with Southampton Village since August 1st, 2007. So he has served us quite well over a very long period of time. And we just wanted to read a quick anecdote from our chief of the Southampton Fire Department, Alfred Callahan. And he says the following. "Dennis has been an employee with this village for over 13 years. Never before has our department seen the challenges faced over the past year. Our department has had to reinvent the way volunteer fire departments are managed and administered. Dennis is a major part of that here. Over the last year, Dennis has seen his workload double and has had to maintain flow of information and administration uninterrupted, regardless of the challenges of COVID-19 through our way. Dennis has been instrumental continued service of our department. And because of his hard work and unwavering dedication, we have seen no interruption in our services. Nearly all fire districts are managed by a full-time staff of house personnel, secretaries, treasurer, and clerical support. Dennis must fill all these positions plus more being the only employee at the firehouse. Recently, Dennis also became a volunteer member of this department, dedicating his personal time outside of work to the Southampton community as a member of the fire police company. Dennis adapts every two years to a new chief of the firehouse. However, he is the constant backbone behind the scenes and makes this department function. He does this with no complaints and a devotion to his job we need to encourage and recognize." So congratulations, Dennis. It's always great to see Dennis in Village Hall. Dennis also has a great voice, and we're always proud and happy to see Dennis around. So thank you, Dennis, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Dennis.
The next portion of our meeting is the board presentations. And we have an Ethics Committee annual report to the board by Reverend Pfeifer. Is he available, Charlene? Or do you have a report that you'll read on his behalf?
Actually, he was going to present the report. Kat, do we have him as an attendee? I don't see him. If you'd like, I can just read the report. Not that long.
There's somebody in as a phone number. Does anybody know his phone number?
No. I know that there's somebody speaking on behalf of the- There are two people that wanted to speak on the public hearing that's on next on the agenda.
Right, okay. I don't see him in.
All right, so I'll just read the report. "Report of Ethics Committee to the Village Trustees for the year 2020. My name is Stephen Pfeifer, and as the newly appointed Chair of the Village Board of Ethics, on behalf of our other members, Christian Pico, Theresa Melhondo, Mylene Michelle Guerrero, Mimi, and Vincent Skorbisky, I submit the Village Trustees this report for 2020 as required under Chapter 7, Article 4, Section J of the Village Code. Summary of activities: In 2020, the Ethics Board held its four mandated meetings, adjudicated two cases, helped coordinate ethics training for the village employees and administrators, received and reviewed required yearly financial disclosure statements, alerted chairs of boards and committees on the need to find persons willing to serve as alternates, and began reviewing the 2009 draft of the Village Employee Policy Manual. Recommended changes to the text or administration of the Code of Ethics. The videos and slides of the most recent ethics training should be made available to new employees to be reviewed within 60 days. Official in-person ethics training should be scheduled at least once every two years to communicate new interpretations and precedents of applicable municipal ethics law. Advisory committees are exempt from submitting financial disclosure statements. We believe this should apply as well to the Planning Commission, who also provides as an exclusively advisory function. Part 3, General Recommendations. The selection of alternates to serve on land use boards remains an important priority, especially for the zoning board of appeals, so the quorums can be maintained in the face of recusals, absences, and abstentions. The Village Trustees are invited to advertise for candidates to be interviewed to replace Vincent Skorbinski, who will step down from the Ethics Board as soon as his replacement is found. Part 4, Closing Remarks. We extend thanks to Linda Gessford for her years of service to the Ethics Board and to Christian Pico, who while still serving, needs to be recognized for his indispensable service as Chair over the past four years in addition to overseeing the revision of the Ethics Code and the propagation of the highest standards of responsible and open service to our government, to our community. Ethics is the study of the aughts of relationships and responsibilities. As members of the Ethics Board, we are proud to continue our work with the employees and officers of our village to explore, clarify, and support how we ought to conduct our responsibilities to ourselves, to each other, and to our environment with that goal of even fairer, even more just, diverse, and merciful Village of Southampton. And to conclude, please help address the needs that the Ethics Committee has for a new member and that the land use boards have for new members to serve as alternates. On your behalf, thank you and on behalf of the Village Board of Ethics. So that was the report, the annual report that is required."
Thank you, Charlene. We see Reverend here now. And would you like to say anything? Charlene read and summarized your report, but if there's anything you'd like to add, we'd love to hear from you. And by the way, thank you very much for chairing the committee. It's a lot of thankless work that you do, and thank you for being at our meeting tonight, Stephen.
Well, thank you. And just want to add one thing at the end. We would like to suggest that the Village Government website could have a section dedicated to, called Opportunities, which would include the jobs open on boards and committees as well as a brief description of the purpose and duties of each board and committee so that the general public knows what they do and knows if there are any openings that they could apply for. I think that would be a useful thing to have up on our Village Government website.
Transparency.
Transparency in government and all that. And that's all I have to say. I was here from the beginning, but I just appeared magically about a third of the way through the reading of my report. I apologize.
It's not your fault.
Thank you very much. We all kind of appeared a little late at this meeting tonight. So thank you. We see Sheila in the background too. So Sheila, thank you very much for being in attendance tonight. And we'll definitely make sure we incorporate your suggestion about the Village Opportunities on the website. We'll get going on that as soon as tomorrow. So thank you very much. And feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting. We can put you back in as a viewer and as a participant, and we can move on to the next portion of our meeting. So thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next portion of our meeting is the public hearing. So I would like to make a motion to open the application of 71 Hill Street LLC requesting a special permit for a transient hotel and workforce housing pursuant to Section 116-5 of the Village Code for the property located at 71 and 91 Hill Street, Southampton, New York. Suffolk County Tax Back numbers 0904-06.00-01.00-07.00 So that's my motion. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it looks like there's some residents here who would like to participate in this public hearing. So we'll begin with some of the comments from our residents. If there's anyone who'd like to come in now, please raise your hand. We've got Linda Riley and Rob Varadian. I think we'll go with Linda first, as she's the attorney on the project, and then we'll go with Rob Varadian. Thank you, everybody, for attending this public hearing.
Okay. Here she comes. Hi, Linda, you're muted. I will ask you to unmute. Linda, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have a camera button? Can you put your camera on? Here, I'll ask you to start video. There you go.
Okay. That should be, okay. Hi, I am Linda Riley. I am representing 71 and 91 Hill. Those are two different LLCs that own the property at 71 Hill Street and 91 Hill Street. This is a continuation of the hearing. So I'm going to trust that you're familiar with what the project is. I really wanted to address some procedural matters as much as anything today. I dropped off today an EAF Part 1 for the SECRE review and also proposed plans that show both the existing conditions and our proposal at this point in time. The procedural aspects that I wanted to discuss with you include a number of different things that are going on here, really. One of them is the discontinuance, or the proposed discontinuance, of a portion of Varadian Way, which has certain requirements under New York State Village Law 6-612 and 6-614, and which the abandonment of the portion is important to this overall project. So it needs to be addressed as part of the whole process. We also have the special exception permit, which the mayor just read the notice of public hearing for. And then finally, there's another component of the project, which is some reconfiguration of the parking on 91 Hill Street. 91 Hill Street, we're not planning on proposing any change to the buildings or the use at all. It's largely a question of reconfiguring the parking lot only. The same number of parking spaces will be retained, but they'll be in a different layout. It'll be subject to Planning Board site plan approval, of course, and possibly also a variance from the zoning board of appeals because the code has a provision that does not at the moment allow two swimming pools on one lot. What ties all of these together is, first of all, the requirement under the State Environmental Review Act that there is an environmental review of this whole proposal all at once because the SECRE, State Environmental Quality Review Act, basically discourages segmented review or review that looks at one part of a project at one time. So we have submitted the EAF Part 1, which sort of kicks off, if you will, the SECRE process. And one thing that we wanted to accomplish tonight was to ask you as the Board of Trustees, because you have really the fundamental jurisdiction over the most important parts of this project, which are the special exception permit, which is under your authority, and the discontinuance of the portion of Varadian Way, which is also purely under your authority. It made sense to us that you might assume lead agency status. So we are asking you tonight if you could, if you're willing to assume lead agency status and if you'll coordinate it with the other agencies involved so we don't have a segmented review going on. We believe that this qualifies as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, but we have provided you with a long-form EAF that is used for type 1 actions or unlisted actions. And, you know, we know you will review it and make your own determination there. So please consider that as a request fundamental tonight to circulate the EAF and coordinate lead agency status. We have, of course, the proposal in front of you, which has been discussed, but not specifically noticed for a hearing, the partial discontinuance of a portion of Varadian Way. I can speak more on what that involves, but I have, I do want to point out that I have submitted a formal petition to the Board of Trustees, which I believe you all have, which provides you with the meets and bounds legal description and the legal basis for which we're asking for this partial abandonment or discontinuance of a portion of the road. And the state law on that requires a public hearing that is specifically published and noticed. So we are also asking you tonight to publish, prior to your next meeting, a notice of hearing specifically on the discontinuance of a portion of Varadian Way so that we make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted. I have, I'm happy to go into more depth on our application, our proposal, how we meet the criteria of the special exception permit, and on the discontinuance of the road. But since we're asking to have these procedural matters addressed so that everything is done correctly, I'll wait and see if you have any questions and ask you to put it over for the next meeting, although I'm happy to address any aspect of this application with you.
Thank you, Linda. Do any of our board members have any questions for Linda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Ken Gray here. I'd like to ask Linda a question, if I may.
Please, thank you very much, Ken.
Great, thank you. Linda, good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good. I know you have been working with Brian on this project. And, you know, as I've said a couple of times, I've been the village attorney for about 10 minutes now. So I just want to be clear on what you're asking is, you're asking this board this evening to declare itself lead agency, and I think it's appropriate to also identify this as an unlisted action? Is that one request you have for tonight?
Yes. Well, what, I mean, as I understand it, lead agency status should be coordinated with the other involved agencies. The other involved agencies are listed on our EAF. They include the Planning Board, which is doing site plan approval, and certain other boards. But so it should be coordinated, generally speaking. In my experience, the board that's seeking to take lead agency status usually does the coordination, sending it out to the other involved agencies.
Of course.
Yeah, okay.
Just to see if anybody objects to say no. I think we're better suited to be the lead agency.
Thank you.
I understand that. So obviously, you're understanding that tonight, what we'll simply do at the end of this presentation and any questions from the public is actually continue this public hearing, but then renotice it for all intents and purposes, like you said, the special exception permit and the discontinuance of the dedication of the roadway.
Right, and it could be folded into a SECRE hearing also.
Very well then. Okay, I just want it to be clear that we're on the same page. And Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it back to you if you want to see if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on the public hearing.
Thank you, Ken. That was very helpful. We really appreciate that. We do have three more hands. So we'll move forward with Rob Varadian, and then we'll go to DeeDee. And then Linda, if you can just kind of maybe stick around and help us-
Of course.
No questions, because I'm sure they will come up.
Of course.
Jacob III. All right, there he is. How you doing, Rob?
Mr. Mayor, just in case anyone wants to see it, I do have the proposed plan up on my screen, so I could share it. If anyone would like, you know, anyone who's speaking would like to take a look at it.
I think that could be helpful. Maybe we'll let Rob, you know, give his commentary in the public portion. And then maybe when DeeDee takes over, we can put the rendering up.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Charlene.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me, Jesse?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Terrific. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Most of you know me, but those who don't, I'm Rob Varadian. And by the way, a background, a resident of Southampton Village, a treasurer and executive committee board member of the Southampton Art Center. And our family owns also a retail building on Main Street where J. Crew was formerly. My day job is a principal in a real estate investment management firm, where we invest in a lot of development across the country, across like 17 markets, primarily in residential, both in housing subdivisions and master plans, as well as urban markets. Our Brazil operation, though, does own about 30 hotels, and we developed a five-star hotel in Sao Paulo. You know, initially, I was asked to give input into this matter about five years ago by the board as the public street of Varadian Way was named for my father, Moon Varadian, who for many years of service to the village in such capacities as chairman of the planning board. And this street was being essentially eliminated except for a tiny portion up front, which was to serve as a driveway essentially to the Southampton Inn. Fortunately, and unlike the press indicated, the street was dedicated while my dad was still alive, and it was something he was extraordinarily proud of. But what began as emotional interest in this matter really led me to study it more, including the history of Varadian Way and the general area which was located, and realize, and I really want to speak to you more, regardless of the name on the street, as a village resident, a stakeholder, because the developer's plan, I believe, from experience in the real estate business, as well as living in the village my entire life, the developer's plan has some significant issues to it. You know, stepping back, you know, generally, I feel that a four-star hotel would be a great benefit to the village overall, whether at this site or another site. But a four-star hotel is not just a really nice room, but it really presents an overall experience to the guests, including great amenities, such as a great fitness center, including a spa, a destination-type resident that would really serve not only the hotel patrons, but all the Hamptons, and really high-end service with an experienced operator. That's not really what you have here. You know, the Southampton Inn is a two-and-a-half to three-star hotel with a café embedded in the hotel that I believe only serves breakfast. And the owner's plan is really to effectively Frankenstein an additional 47 higher-end suites to the existing 90-room, two-and-a-half, three-star infrastructure, really sharing the same arrival, service, pool, and dining with the Southampton Inn guests, and not really create a separate four-star experience at all. This plan really, it doesn't, it's not typically done to do that because it really doesn't work. There's also a question as to use. You know, Southampton is a seasonal market, and really adding another 47 rooms to 90 rooms, you're going to have one of the largest hotels out here without any true amenity base or draw, and you could be seeing a lot of empty rooms off-season. I mean, a comparison would be Gurnee's Inn, which is on a beach, has a phenomenal restaurant, spa facility. But this would be, you know, 147-room hotel, you know, with an off-season, you'll probably see a lot of empty rooms. So there is a question also, as is, is the use actually viable? You know, I'd also like to address some of the design elements and then some of the planning considerations, if I may. You know, the design of the new building is really a several hundred-foot row of attached bungalows with a single-story uniform elevation with the Southampton Inn brick painted white to match it color-wise. You know, this is probably the most inexpensive way to design a property like this as there's no elevators, corridors which create inefficiency, and the such structural items is probably cheaper. But the look of this will be really uninspiring, more like a travel motel. The third issue I really want to bring up, in addition to some of the use and design considerations for what the developer is doing here is really the elimination of Varadian Way, except for a small portion at the front, which really serves as a driveway into the inn and attachment to parking for hotel guests behind the one existing building, which won't be touched as indicated, and the one plan. DeeDee basically made the ask to the village that the village give a public street to a commercial, for-profit enterprise for free, basically, for what is essentially an aesthetic benefit only for her guests. The street itself has major potential here to become a significant component of the master plan in that area. It is the only street north of Hill Street after Windmill Lane, all the way to Breeze Lane, with the potential to fit into the street grid in that area north of Hill Street for additional traffic circulation or secondary access into Windmill Lane or even into the movie theater parking area, which may be redeveloped or serve as village auxiliary parking, or both. Your Planning Commission itself, in their review of this plan, I think, late last year, mentioned that the street was an asset to the village and should be studied as part of the overall master plan for the area, including the movie theater, and not in isolation. A couple more. You know, an independent I wanted to bring up also, in addition to your Planning Commission comments, an independent study by the village, when this plan first came up five years ago, recommended, quote, "that the planning board consider the long-term planning consideration for alternative access between Hill Street and the roadways to the north. While there are no current plans for such a connection, this was done about five years ago, there may be circumstances in the future which would benefit such a connection. The permanent abandonment of Varadian Way would render this option virtually infeasible." Your board predecessors also took this into consideration with Varadian Way as part of the 1970 and the 1982 updated village master plans to potentially provide access through to Windmill Lane. In addition, when the Coopers Farm subdivision was approved, even though the street did not connect at the time because there was opposition about this, it was about 35, 40 years ago, it did mandate as a condition of the subdivision that a portion of land be dedicated to the village so that access could be provided if the village so needed. So the punchline is, if the village gives this street away, it's really never getting it back, regardless of any future planning needs the village has in the area. You know, basically foregoing this planning facility is really a possible aesthetic benefit for hotel guests. The street, Merulable, is not necessary, and a redevelopment of the site can incorporate it with a good architect and a site planner. You know, and from a public point of view, with Agnewan Park and the Southampton Art Center, public parks and Jobbs Lane, you know, we're doing, as you know, some great things now in the park for the art center. It's really highly improbable that this will ever be a public benefit. It's really just for the hotel guests. And planning aside, but just looking at the configuration of the parking lot, you know, I really, from a real estate point of view, don't understand how the proposed driveway and the parking lot plan is even going to work when in peak season you're adding another 47 hotel guestrooms to the 90 existing guestrooms. The developer herself said another 25 workers will be employed, as well as having supply, maintenance, and service trucks, all which now will have to come in and out of Hill Street alone. all which now will have to come in and out of Hill Street alone in front of First Neck Lane with zero secondary access. Usually when you expand the development, you add traffic circulation, you don't eliminate it. So in addition, how were trucks really supposed to circulate and turn around in a packed parking lot? Or even park for that matter? Are they supposed to park on Hill Street when they're doing the maintenance or servicing the hotel? And, you know, also what about fire and safety considerations? So all things, I believe the board should continue. So as such, concluding, you know, I would respectfully ask the board that, given the number of significant issues, that I believe you should not grant the special use permit requested in the plan presented, but really should have further study on this and ultimately receive a plan that works. As to use, the site and the building plan and how this site and Varadian Way become incorporated intelligently into the overall master plan and not in isolation before you consider this application. You know, it's a six-acre site with a public street located right next to the village core. You know, given the size of the development and its location, it's really critical we get this right. And I know it's a nice plan with green in it, but we have a saying in the real estate business, when we invest, you know, what looks good from far away is often far from good. So I'd leave you with that and thank you again for letting me have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Rob. It was great to hear from you and thank you for all the good work you're doing with the Southampton Art Center and for your participation tonight. Definitely made a lot of good points. So thank you again. Thank you again also for all of your, for all of your points. So with that said, we do have additional attendees with their hands raised. I did see DeeDee, so we do want to give her a chance to respond if, if she puts her hands back up. But in the interim, we'll wait for that and then we have Jacob who would like to, to participate. So Jacob and Kat, we could let Jacob in and thank you again.
And there's Jacob asked to unmute. Hi, Jacob.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. Good to see everyone and nice to hear Robert as well. So I, I think my perspective is alluding to what Robert had mentioned is overall, it looks like an interesting plan. I do respect DeeDee. We, my company uses Southampton Inn, will be there tomorrow. In fact, staying over the weekend as well. I've been in the village of Southampton now for over 30 years and had the honor of not only being part of the Varadian family, but also when Moon passed on, being on the village planning board. So I think this question of elevating a four-star hospitality brand has been going on for quite some time. In fact, I was involved in it with George Smirjin when at the time I was trying to get the Fairmont Group to come in. Because unlike Palm Beach, the village of Southampton, like Rob was alluding to, really lacked the four-star brand that we rightly deserved. I mean, we're a prominent village. However, be that as it may, I think the Southampton Inn serves a very important purpose in the village. I think DeeDee's layout is an interesting layout. It does need to be studied by way from traffic practicality, hazard practicality, but from open green space application, environmental application, I think it does require further review. What caught my attention about it was this is a transformational opportunity for our village to make Hill Street a true gateway. There's been two challenges in the village and I am thankful to the village board for bringing it up because it's been a 30-year conversation in the village. And that was, you know, branding a good hospitality, adaptive reuse, which is what DeeDee is doing. And rightly also serving the need of age and place, people in my age group who want to downsize from the 4, 5,000 square foot homes and creating affordable rental housing. So the way I'm looking at it is an opportunity and we are actually interviewing one of the prominent Peconic AIA design firms to look over DeeDee's plan and also recommend a, an adjoining two 25,000-square-foot age-in-place affordable housing plans at the movie theater site as well. So I see this as a overall long-term strategic opportunity for the village to serve two purposes, from a hospitality aspect, open green space aspect and adjoining the two-acre site of 43 Hill Street. I've been in conversations with the owner, but I think what I'm looking for as a developer and an engineer is with, as the village is reviewing this permitting plan, DeeDee's permitting plan, is there an openness to consider in a joint design plan to really serve a residential need in the village as well at 43 Hill Street as well? And we baked in cost design to buy the property, start to create an eco-friendly design scheme as well. And based on our understanding of the zoning, we can fit about 80 units in both age-in-place and affordable one-bedroom rental assets to the tune around 900 square feet. So I think that's what I wanted to plant the seed to the village board of trustees this evening is as you're looking to this rather catalyst design by DeeDee, because she actually stepped up and did what a lot of us have been thinking about for over two, three decades now, is she's looking to do an adaptive reuse, step up some upscale hospitality. Look, we don't have the luxury right now and with all, in our respect, Robert and in our end of development, engineering, construction space. You know, if we were ever going to get a, a Fairmont or a four-star brand in the last 30 years, we would have had it by now. Because in the past conversations, it was creating adjoining lots when the White family was still alive that owned the village latch, which is now becoming yet another condo McMansion development. So we lost that opportunity a while ago to do 120, 140-unit four-star brand hospitality. I think DeeDee is trying to address with what she has in her site. But to Robert's point, addressing the fact of hazards, traffic hazard, open greenery is, is a valid point. But what I'm also presenting is we have a very unique opportunity now as the village is revisiting again this switch plan design. Again, that's been going on for 20 years, to really do something magnificent, adjoining 71, 91 and 43 Hill Street to address the composition of issues for the residents of Southampton Township and the village of affordable housing, age-in-place, as well as upscale hospitality. And that's what I wanted to share. And that's something that we are looking to accost in and bring a design plan to the village trustees as well as you're reviewing DeeDee's plan. And that's what I wanted to share with everyone. And I think to DeeDee's credit, she took the lead. You know, we've been quietly thinking about this for a lot of years. So creating this adjoining plan, I think is something rather unique that in the end, if done right, will be very well received.
Thank you very much, Jacob. We appreciate the, the comments. Well said. We'd like to know if there's anyone else, any attendees who'd like to join as a panelist to participate in the public comment. And just a friendly reminder, we see Tom Edmonds. Good to see you. We did not mention at the beginning of our public commentary that traditionally we, we limit comment to approximately three minutes. So just wanted to just say a friendly reminder, starting with, you know, Tom, about the three minutes that we typically have here. So Tom, Andrew, you're on mute. I can see you moving your lips. Is there anything you wanted to say? Okay, Tom, thank you very much.
This was a really great meeting. I learned a lot. I'm here to support DeeDee. God health and the Southampton Inn, who's done a lot to support the nonprofits in the village. And I'm not sure we need a more expensive hotel. DeeDee's done a great service. She's provided free rooms for artists, writers, for performers. I don't know that a big four-star hotel would do that. I think Jacob's comments made a lot of sense and I hope we can work this out. I don't think just stopping the project will help anything. DeeDee's put her heart and soul in this and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. It's good to see you as always. We'll see if there's anyone else who would like to join in. Thanks again, Tom. You're doing a great job at the Southampton History Museum, so we really appreciate it. We have DeeDee here. So DeeDee, we'll let you in. Thank you very much, Kat.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Let me just ask her to unmute. There we go. There you go, DeeDee. Welcome.
Thank you. Am I, is there a camera here?
Okay, I'll ask you to start your camera. Maybe you can't.
Oh, start video.
There you go. All right.
Thank you. Um, so thank you very much for the comments from Robert and from Jacob and certainly from Tom and everyone else. I don't think in, in 45 years of working that I've ever been called Frankenstein. And I was thinking about this more in terms of being a Cinderella project. So with that in mind, I would wonder if it would be helpful just for 30 seconds to show the site plans? Or is everybody pretty familiar with what I'm trying to do here? I guess just, just to me, having been involved with, owned and partially run for the last decade, the Southampton Inn, I see it as, you know, it's charming in terms of being a resort. The resort is our village. Even if you have six acres or three and a half acres or the 71 Hill Street site is two acres, this isn't going to be a 40 or 140-acre property with all of the bells and whistles and amenities that other properties in other places might offer in the terms of four and five-star arenas. But it's a way to bring tourism into our village, which we know from the Business Revitalization Committee. We know from our neighbors that we, I think seriously do need people on a year-round basis to visit us and to go to the cultural institutions and dine when we're permitted to do that safely again and to, to shop again when we're able to do that safely again. And so I think it's a really good opportunity to utilize the site at the moment that, I don't want to call it Frankenstein, but we don't need tertiary commercial space within our village as much as we need workforce housing, rental housing and additional tourism. So with a very tight site, and I would certainly welcome comments from, from planners, from planning commission. I have been doing this for a long time by way of, I don't know whether people know, I have done over a billion dollars in real estate development over my career, which is a lot longer than others, including being the head of planning for about 14 cities in New York State for the Urban Development Corporation back during the 1980s. And I see this as a classic example of being able to take a fairly old site plan with a lot of blacktop and north-south circulation and convert it into something that is just much more appealing, like the Frankenstein to the Cinderella. And I, I think the, the site plan, the building will be pretty. There's no question that whatever is going on now is something that will be discussed. We'll have architectural review board. We will have planning board in terms of circulation. There's no question that emergency vehicles are going to have to be able to have clear access through. We have very little trucking. I guess when we order dozens of beach towels for our guests, that would be a drop-off from UPS, but otherwise it's not much delivery. And it's a way of, of increasing the product that we now have to something that's a little bit more on a year-round basis. It's got separate living room, a little kitchen area, hopefully fireplaces in the living room. Each one of these units will have a balcony or a patio that will look out over what I'm hoping to create a 55,000-square-foot green space, more than an acre, between the old Southampton Inn and this new product. Management is in place. No, it's not branded, it's not franchised and it's not chained. I think that's a good thing because I don't think our village is franchised or chained or, or, or flagged. I think it's an opportunity for the inn to hire locally, to work with the local community, to reflect the local history and the culture and the very special qualities that our village and that Moon Varadian have brought to Southampton over the years. I've been coming out, my parents bought a house in 1951. And so quietly I've been in Southampton for, I can't tell you how many years, but really a long time. And I've seen how it grows and I cling on to all of the wonderful historical aspects of the village and the, and the beautiful nature. And that's what we want, our, our tri-state area and even international tourists when it becomes safe again and people from other states to visit, to enjoy, to spend money, to support the economy and to have a really great experience. On the plan, it's 46 hotel suites. And in addition, it's taking the two buildings that are currently on Hill Street with the clock tower. It's not changing them in any way, but the use is all commercial. They are mostly filled at the moment, but I think we can do better. I think that I can create two workforce housing units on the top floors of both Building E, which was the old Merrill Lynch or the old Bill Roy and Bosch or the old Chinese restaurant, depending on how far back you go. And on the other building where we used to have a mortgage brokerage firm, we can create another two houses. So four workforce housing units on the tops. And then we would take the second floor of what we call Building F and that can be converted as tenants leases come up for renewal. We can make that into 900 to, I guess it's 845 to 925, no, I'm sorry, 845 to 1,100 square-foot apartments, which would be lovely. And then on the ground floors, it's 6,060 square feet remaining as commercial space. It need, village, village business zoning isn't going to permit the workforce housing, residential and hospitality, which is why we need this special permit. And for the Varadian Way, I differ with Rob respectfully. I, I think it's, it has been a driveway for the Southampton Inn. I think it's still Varadian Way. It still honors Moon Varadian and the family and all the wonderful things that they've done. But the northern part of it is used for Uber drivers. It's used for skateboarders. It's, it's not, it doesn't go anywhere and I don't know that it will ever go anywhere. And I also spoke to the planning commission and was told it was a plan abandoned during the 80s and then discussed again in the 90s. If there's a use for it, I totally agree. But I think creating this amount of green space, another acre of park to supplement the Southampton Art Center and the History Museum and Agawam Park and, you know, make Southampton Village into a fabulous destination resort as a village, not only as this little property. I'm sorry, that was more than three minutes. I apologize, but I'll take questions.
Thank you very much, DeeDee. As we said at our last meeting, you've been instrumental in making our, our business district vibrant and basically providing a great, great place for our residents and guests to stay, taking a great lead during the pandemic by housing doctors and nurses and other healthcare professionals. So we always want to acknowledge you and thank you when you're here. And we want to see if there's any additional people, any residents or viewers here that have any questions for DeeDee during this public hearing? Or if there's any questions or comments from the board?
Jesse, I don't see any hands up at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, mayor, can you see the plan on the screen?
We can. It looks good. Thank you. I know, I know Jane had requested that, that we put it up. So we can leave that there for, for viewers to see for a few more moments. And this plan could also be provided to anybody, any residents who ask for it. It's public information. And so anyone could email us at Village Hall and request a copy of this and we would.
Can I also, I have no issues also trying to go back to what we've been trying to do for 20 years, which is to create some sort of a master plan. It just hasn't happened and I need to fix the buildings up and leave them or we need to move, move forward with something that I'm hoping will be the catalyst for being able to work with other potentially available sites within the village. We can share. I'd love to be able to do that. So again, this is not a fait accompli right now, but it's trying to. So again, this is not a fait accompli right now, but it's trying to march through the process.
Thank you very much again, DeeDee. To our, to our board, what I would maybe suggest, but what I'd like to hear from Ken, we have a resolution later on in the suggested resolution section. It could make sense to close this, because we likely have to renotice this. We can get to that in the resolution section, but just some food for thought for the board. And Ken, you know, when we get to that resolution, we'd love your thoughts and comments there.
Certainly. Absolutely.
Okay, well, if, if, so I would like to, now that it's open, I would like to, to close it as we move to the resolution section. So I just want to make sure that the board is okay with that. We can adjourn it as well, but I think, Ken, you would recommend closing this, and then, again, because we have to renotice it.
Well, I wouldn't recommend necessarily closing it. I think you can continue it with a renoticing, so that this transcript remains part of the record on the ongoing hearing. And then we'll renotice it for the other purposes. Then this board's going to need to make a decision, and you may not want to do it tonight, right now, on whether or not you, the board, want to be lead agency, or if you want to discuss it with maybe the chairman of the Planning Board to see if it's more appropriate for them to take over lead agency.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Ken. So I, if you would agree, or we could basically adjourn this, we'll keep it open, not for our work session, but for the next, next public meeting, March, which will give us some time to notice this as well.
It'll be the March eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So with that said, we'd like to make a motion to adjourn this to our March eleventh meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, everyone. Charlene, there's communications to the board. Let's give a quick, quick summary of them. We also have. So we can.
The Southampton Soccer Club has requested the use of the Downs Family Park for spring, summer, and fall soccer programs from March twenty-second to December fifth of twenty twenty-one. There is a resolution later in the, on the agenda to approve that. Item number two, the squash court, there was also a request from the summer, for the, to use Dosher Park for the summer squash program. However, I was informed by Gary Gilleski today that we need approval from the town of Southampton, because it is a CPF property. So we're going to table that to the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Charlene. Next is our suggested resolution, so we'll let you take it from here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hold on one second. Oh, I do have this here. Okay, great. Resolution number one, resolved that the claims for the warrant dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-one totaling, I have the warrant right here, eight hundred forty-two thousand eight dollars and forty-five cents warrant a fourteen general fund be audited and approved. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two, that the reading of the minutes of the public session and special session of be disposed of, be disposed of with, and with those minutes be accepted and filed by the village administrator, and that the actions taken at that meeting be and hereby are ratified and approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, which is attached in the handout, resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized the budget amendment number three, three oh six, attached to various funds to fund various employee benefit COVID-related expenses totaling fifty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four is going to be tabled at this point in time?
Thank you.
Do we need a resolution to table?
No.
Okay. Resolution number five, resolution number twenty, this resolved that resolution number twenty-one, adopted by the Board of Trustees at the November twelfth, twenty twenty, meeting approving transfer from the Fire Capital Reserve account for equipment be amended as follows, subject to permissive referendum. Fire chief's vehicle, the previous request was a total of, for the vehicle, eighty thousand dollars. The vehicle was actually purchased from, was founded Buzz Chew on a New York State contract for a savings of just over six thousand dollars. So the vehicle will be in following components. For the fire truck, we will have Chevrolet Silverado in the amount of forty thousand eighty-three dollars. Island Tech Services for a mobile computer in the amount of three thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars. Integrated services for lights, siren, and the console, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents. For unit number seven dash three dash sixteen ladder truck, there is a request for twenty-four hundred dollars for integrated wireless for a radio. And then there is a request for seventy-eight hundred dollars for steel plate protectors for two brush trucks from Liberty Iron Works. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolve that the Board of Trustees appoint Derek Heisman as ninety-day temporary senior office assistant in the Building Department at a rate of thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents per hour effective February twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves Roger Lelucia to be accepted into the Southampton Fire Department effective January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, as a probationary member for one year. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves Oscar Ramirez to be accepted into the Southampton Fire Department effective January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, as a probationary member for one year. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, whereas to address the ongoing village water quality issues and downtown business district revitalization, the Board of Trustees would like to proceed with creating a sewer, village sewer district. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby creates the Southampton Village Sewer District Task Force, be created for the purpose of advising and making recommendations to the village board on matters relating to and selecting an engineering firm to design and for the design formation of the village sewer district, and be it further resolved that the following members be appointed. Paul Travis Chair, Glenn Zanotti, Ed Moneypenny, Janice Shearer, Bob Varadian, Megan Major, Mayor Warren, Trustee McLaughlin, Charlene Cagle-Betts, Village Administrator.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number ten, whereas the New York State Green Innovation Grant Program provides grants on a competitive basis to projects that improve water quality and mitigate the effects of climate change through practices including green stormwater infrastructure, energy efficiency, and water efficiency. And whereas GIGP funding is provided through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and is administered, and is it administered by this New York State, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC. And whereas the Village of Southampton intends to request GIGP funding for the Old Town Pond Green Infrastructure Project for the purpose of installing a constructed treatment wetland in the Old Town Pond watershed area. And whereas the Village of Southampton is eligible to apply for up to ninety percent of eligible costs. And whereas on behalf of the Village, RU Environmental Engineering and Geology, DPC RU, has prepared the conceptual design plan, feasibility study, and short environmental assessment form, parts one, two, and three pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, which identified no potential for significant adverse impacts and recommended that the village board adopt a negative declaration. And whereas the estimated cost of the project is nine hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the Village of Southampton hereby states its support of the water quality improvement project at Old Town Pond and authorizes the mayor or his designate to sign any and all documents related to the grant. And be it further resolved that the village will request ninety percent of eligible project costs up to an estimated eight hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars in GIGP funding and providing a ten percent matching share estimated at ninety-eight thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And be it further resolved that the village board accepts the secret documentation prepared by RU and adopts a negative declaration. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Quick discussion. Just, thank you. Just want to make sure that, do we know what the costs will be prior to us potentially receiving the grants? Are we going to be utilizing our ten percent matching share of the ninety-eight thousand if costs come out before? Are we waiting for the grants before any of this work commences?
I can add a little color in. Charlene, my, my, my take on this, and would love to hear from Charlene as well, and Starper jumping in there quickly. The work that was needed to be done in order to request this grant was previously done by RU engineers. They did the groundwater and the, the Old Town Pond water study. And we resolved that actually tonight in the first resolution to pay them for the work that was done. So this is the approximate cost of the work, the nine hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. And then we're hoping, we'll see if we get the grant. We hope we do. The Green Innovation Grant Program, it's a great grant program by New York State. So the estimated cost that will owe, if we do get the grant, would be the ninety-eight thousand. But we also hope to go to the CPF Water Quality Fund and obtain funding there, so perhaps we can have the whole thing covered. But this is, again, this is the estimated matching share. I hope that helps, but if it doesn't, I'm sure Charlene could also jump in.
That, that helps with on the funding. My question is, is work going to start before the grant is received so that we are going to incur costs of the ninety-eight thousand? I understand that all the work done to date in preparing it is now being paid for from tonight's resolution. Is other work going to start on these projects that will incur costs? Or are we waiting until the funding comes in before we go ahead with those? Because what, in my mind, we're willing to put up close to a hundred thousand dollars out of nine hundred and eighty-one. I would hate for us to start spending all that money and then start going down it, realize we don't get the grant, and we've already sunk a hundred thousand into it, and then where do we get the other funding? And the village, you know, might want to see this work completed, and then there's a larger cost to the village. So I just want to try and gauge a timeline on commencing of work.
Trustee Pilar, I believe that the GIGP grant funding is a reimbursement grant fund program where we would have to, the village would have to outlay the funds initially. But we would not begin to do that until we got the grant approved. And I don't believe most of the grants that come through DEC do not permit you to spend the project funding before you have a signed contract.
Charlene, that is correct. If you spend any of the money before you have the signed contract, it will not be part of the reimbursable funds.
Perfect. That's, that's, sentence says it all.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you, Trustee Pilaro, for the question. And then also, while we're on the discussion, I just wanted to thank Rob Coburn from the Clean Water Committee. You know, he was very active on this, and he's also been out trying to get private donations as well, not just for this project in case we need it, but also for other projects for Old Town. So they've been very active, and just wanted to give Rob a quick, quick mention here for his efforts.
So now we need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Resolution number eleven, resolve that the Board of Trustees authorized the Southampton Soccer Club Limited to use the Downs Family Park for their twenty-twenty-one soccer program from March twenty-second to December fifth, twenty twenty-one. Or do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. A second?
Thank you.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve is going to be tabled till the next meeting, till we have an opportunity to speak to the town CPF Fund Coordinator. And that was regarding the squash program. Resolution number thirteen, the Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges and accepts a donation of carpet installed in the village clerk's office from Robert Gill of Carpet One valued at thirty-eight hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? And I would like to thank the folks from Carpet One, because they saw that we were doing some minor improvements in-house and painting in the village clerk's office and putting up some new lighting. And both Kathy and Mimi have taken the charge on redecorating the office a little bit and making it look a little brighter in here. And we got this generous donation of carpet, so it's very nice. All in favor?
Quick question, just on that. With the install and whatever, do we need to split out, and Ken, maybe you can, do we need to split out the install cost versus the carpet cost? Or can it be all combined as one? And again, thank you, Robert Gill from Carpet Man, for the, you know. I just don't know if we need to split out sometimes when it comes to this type of stuff, at least in some of the other charitable stuff that I do. You need to split out what the cost of the actual carpet is versus the cost of the installation.
I don't believe you need to split anything out. I think you can just accept the, accept the donation and say thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's definitely.
It's Carpet Man.
Carpet Man.
Carpet Man.
Yes, I actually had the wrong agenda. We caught that early on.
Yes, we definitely wanted to thank Robert Gill for his generous donation.
Carpet Man.
Yes, Carpet Man. Robert Gill, the Carpet Man.
Well, that concludes our resolution agenda.
I think we have to vote on that, correct?
Oh, yes, we do. All in favor?
Charlene, he just took it back.
Oh, Lord. All in favor?
Okay, the next portion is the comments from board members, as we so to conclude our meeting tonight. So we're in alphabetical order, so first is trustee Arista.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank our Department of Public Works, the whole team, for doing such a great job getting the, the snow off the street, so everyone was able to travel safely. I think it was two snowstorms already, or maybe two and a half, if you wanted to count this morning. And just a reminder that when it does snow, please, we get your cars off the street, and anything that's in the right of way has to be off of the right of way, because we are not responsible if a plow hits something that is something that shouldn't be where it is. So just please remember to do that, and, and that's it. I hope everybody's well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Next is trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. So I too would like, would like to thank DPW for all the hard work. It's a lot to snowplow, especially in the winter. Obviously, it's a time-consuming for our overtime and for our workers, so thank you for all the hard work. Also, I want to take it into, welcome Ken to the team. Thank you for taking on this opportunity to assist us in our legal matters, so thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
And also, I want to also thank Bob Gill for his generous donation to the village, the carpet. And last but not least, I want to welcome Derek Heisman back to the village as a clerk in the Building Department. He previously worked with us, I believe, two years ago, and he is now coming back to us. So I want to welcome him back and wish him luck in his new position, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin. Next is trustee Parrish.
Good evening, and yes, DPW, good work on the snow. Also, Derek, welcome. Good to have you back. Ken, thanks for stepping in so quickly and catching up. I appreciate it. And more importantly, just a little bit of thought for the board going forward with the. And more importantly, just a little bit of thought for the board going forward with the governor allowing people to attend sports events starting the twenty-third. Might be a good opportunity to start talking about getting back into in-person meetings in March. You know, they're allowing a certain number for sporting events inside. So if this board wants to start chewing on that over the next few weeks, it'd be something that I think would be really good for us to get back in person and, you know, give the residents and people to come on in and start, you know, talking to us and sharing with us what they're saying. And that is it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Trustee Parrish. Trustee Pilaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo the beginnings as everyone else, DPW, Ken and Derek, welcome. And really, from my other standpoint, you know, we're starting to see numbers come down, but it doesn't mean, don't be vigilant when everything, we know that indoor dining is starting in New York. We've had, we've seen it here for a while. But we still need to keep doing what we're doing so that we can keep the numbers down.
Thank you, Trustee Pilaro. I just wanted to echo everyone's thoughts. First and foremost, to thank our Department of Public Works. They were up early, four AM or so, making sure that our streets were salted, sand and plowed. When Jean and I were going through some of the purchase orders, we saw purchase orders for tons, I mean, literally ten, ten, twenty, thirty tons of salt. So we're putting our village dollars to good use this winter. We heard the farmer's almanac had requested, had said it was going to be a bad winter and January came and went and we didn't see it, but here it is. It's usually pretty accurate. So again, just wanted to give a shout out to our Department of Public Works and then offer another thank you to Rob and Mark of the Planning Commission. They've done a lot of work on our planning for a sewer, and so we formed our task force tonight. And while they are not part of it, they have great hands and have continued to do work both on the Clean Water Committee and the Planning Commission respectively. This is a bit dated, but still very pertinent. Wanted to thank Officer Matthew Stettler, one of our patrol officers, who was responsible for saving a life a few weeks ago. So wanted to give him also a much deserved thank you for his good work. He's one of our newest officers. Were able to meet each other when he was a summer officer, handing out noise violations, and I thank him for that too. And he did a great job a few weeks ago. Wanted to echo Mark and Jean and Joe's shout out to Derek Highsmith. We're very happy to have him back on board. And then lastly, just wanted to give our board some food for thought. We've got a lot of people calling us up regarding vaccines. And we are in budget season, and I know Charlene is working extremely hard on the budget and also wanted to recognize her for that. And so whether it's in now or in our upcoming budget, it could make sense for an extra administrative or assistant level person to help us answer phones. We are working overdrive in the clerk's office. We know that we keep our Village Hall very lean, but it is likely time for some extra help to take some of that work off of Charlene's shoulders. And actually, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Miranda because she has been working very diligently, helping some of our seniors who are not as computer literate as the rest of our population reach out and get some vaccines when they call us. So she's been working overdrive. I know she was in today with one of our residents on Walgreens website trying to get one of our seniors vaccinated, neither Bridge Hampton or West Hampton. So wanted to give her a thank you as well. And that is all my comments tonight. Thank you to our board for a good meeting. Kept it ninety minutes, which is nice. And that said, would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, we do not have any items for exec session tonight.
Okay. Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?